And if you are some, please feel free to join us for the final acceptance.
Welcome to the October fifteenth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Barrington zoning board of adjustment. Okay.
If we can please.
Someone else? Here we go. No? Spell someone else?
Okay, I think we got it. Yes, alright. So if I could please have a roll call of the members present. One again present.
Tidale present.
Smasco present. Also present, we have our zoning administrator Jamie Jensen and our town planner Ernie Kreveling. So we have one case on tonight, which is case two-two-four-six-seven-gr-two-five for a variance for the owner Tanya Mays. A request for a variance from Article four, section four point one point one, table two, for a front setback of zero, where forty feet is required in the general residential zoning district. So good evening. And before we get started, I do want to let you know we have four seated board members tonight awake. Fifteen seconds and we might have a fifth and a full board. So. Is it? Excellent. Uh, never mind. I'll just comment that also present is our fifth full seated board member, Parker Fairfield. Hi. So welcome. And I do see that we have an authorization. Are you Adam? Okay, an authorization for you to speak. And then are you Tanya? Wonderful. Okay. So welcome. I understand you're seeking a variance tonight. So what I'm going to have you do is we do have your application up on the screen, but I am going to ask you specifically to go through the five criteria in your application about why you meet the criteria for variance. Just push it once and it'll turn green. You don't need to read it. Just tell us about why it is that you're seeking the variance and why you believe that you meet the requirements. If you need to look at what those requirements are, you could certainly look up there or I can give you. I have a copy of your application. Would that help? Okay. But yeah, if you just hit that once, it'll turn green and stay green. There you go.
Okay, so we want the variance because we like to put up a carport. Um, we have a couple of antique vehicles and trees. Put them anywhere else to keep them, preserve them. So that's, so you want me to?
Would it be easier if I told you what criteria to go and then you can answer it more like a question? Would that be easier?
Probably, yeah.
No problem. So why would granting the variance not be contrary to the public interest?
Um, I don't believe that it would impose on anyone. It has setbacks on all three sides except for the road. Um, I don't believe it'll affect anyone's ability to drive beyond us or infringe or to get by us in any way.
Okay. And if you could just speak into the. The bolded.
This is exactly what you gave us.
Yeah.
Uh, and his, what we're asking you. So if you just want to read out what you've already said.
Yeah, that, that explains because you filled this out. So I'm like, yeah. Okay. So you want me to just go right through it? One?
One, two, three, four, five. Yeah.
So one, it will not alter or harm the road or the nature of the neighborhood. It will not impose or encroach on any abutters or have a negative effect on the road. Number two, allowing the car, uh, carport would be in line with other structures neighbors have had to protect their vehicles. Number three, the shelter would allow personal vehicles to be undercover from potential damage of tree branches, debris in winter, snow and ice. Number four, the carport would be durable construction and well maintained as to keep the same aesthetic of the surrounding neighbors and create a better curb appeal of our property. Um, let's see. Is that it? Oh, there's more. Number five, there is no other area it can be placed on the, on the remaining property. It's all hills, trees and wetlands. Um. Then I don't see number six, five, AI or whatever.
There is number six.
Yeah, so it's just multiple, multiple parts of, of five.
Okay, so also granting the variance would not interfere with the ability of travel on the road is, it is consistent with the spirit of the abutters' storage unit. And the property owners have several vehicles. The carport would allow protection of vehicles due to the elements. It meets all other setbacks in remaining three sides.
And. Do you, do we have any comments or questions from our zoning administrator? No? Okay. Um, at this time, I'm going to open public comment and do that first. So we'll open public comment for anybody that's present in the room or online who would like to comment in favor or against this request for a variance. Seeing nobody present in the room, if you're online, you can use the raise hand feature. And seeing nobody online seeking to speak, I will close public comment and turn to the board. Does anybody on the board have any questions? Mr. Fairfield?
So I have some questions for the applicant. Um, so the last one that you read, the property owners have several vehicles. So is this, the, the purpose of this carport is to shelter cars by the road? Um, seeing as you have a garage, why isn't the garage the better place to save the store, keep an antique auto from, from its rotting in the, in the rain and snow and the sleet and the ice and salt on the side of the road?
Uh, well, mainly the two, two of the vehicles are the antiques that I, we don't use them in the winter period. Uh, the barn is not suitable to store a vehicle in. It has a wooden floor. In the back part of the garage, I usually store my antique truck in there when I'm not plowing with it. When you say barn, are you talking about the existing garage on the plan here? I'm talking about both of them. I'm talking that the barn part, you can't put a car in there.
It's, it's one billion though. You're talking about the garage, the barn?
It's attached, yeah, but there's, you can't drive through the barn into the garage. You either drive into the garage and if you drive into the barn, you're probably going to end up through the floor. So.
Have a question for, um, code enforcement. Has an application been submitted for a structure?
Yes.
Will you tell me about the structures? Fire is the foundation of?
Uh, it's just, um, a metal, uh, open sided structure. Uh, so no.
Apologies. That's why they wanted to place it over the paved portion. Um, it's just one of those metal carport structures.
So open sized, no roof, like will roof?
Correct.
We went through this before on, on the other one on Malago or something.
Yes. Uh, not Malago, but can't recall. Correct, yeah.
We're thinking of the same one. And I remember then I questioned the need for a permit and you cleared that up for me. Was I off?
Hmm.
I'm sorry. Um, did you hear everything I said?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, you cleared that up for me. It, that is actually the way that the, the zoning regulation is written.
Correct, yeah. Uh, zoning and code requires anything over two hundred square feet and is considered a structure need to meet setbacks. Um, uh, the only thing the state has exempted out is the tarp type structures. But they would still need to be setbacks by our zoning.
Because of its size?
Correct.
Okay. Um, so in your application, you said your hardship is slopes, trees?
Wetlands, septic system, rock walls, abutters.
I see your survey. You, you were good enough to, to give us a survey, which is great because that.
I would put it somewhere else if I could, but.
So I took a ride out to your place today.
Yeah, I saw you.
You saw me. Your dogs did too.
Oh, yeah.
Um. I can see where you don't have, you can't meet the forty feet. I mean, you know, your, your home is there. But zero feet is a long way from forty feet. Why couldn't you bring that garage in onto your lot? And request a, a setback variance for the minimum amount you would need. Um, so I walked the area, you saw me then, I, I, for the rest of the board, I walked the frontage of this property. Uh, it's very nice out there. Your frontage does slope. It's not severely, but it slopes maybe eight percent, ten percent. Um, from your wooden fence going towards the building. It's high and it's dry there. The front of your house to the right of your pavement, there's a couple of nice trees there. I wouldn't want to cut them either. But if you want to build a garage and you have to lose a tree, instead of us issuing a variance, we typically, or not typically, personally, I would not agree to a variance to save a tree. That's, that's just not a hardship.
Well, okay, so you're talking. The driveway, which is cut out exactly the size of what we want to put on it.
Right.
You're talking butt it off to the right toward the house, toward the shrubs.
Where you have a pickup truck parked in the photographs, in your photographs that you provided to us.
Okay, yeah. Uh, for one thing, there's a large rock that I've had someone try to pull out of the ground there before and they couldn't do it. Ryan Hillsborough was a friend of mine. He tried it with this John Deere. He was like, this thing's huge.
It's sitting below grade.
No, it's sticking up. You can see it. Sticks up out of the ground. If this is the ground, it's up above this high, the tip of it.
Yeah.
That's one problem. And there's two trees there and it's very uneven. I mean, you said they.
Well, I understand it's uneven, but that's construction. I mean.
But this, this, well, for one thing, this isn't a garage. If, if we're allowed to put this up.
That's why I asked him the question in the first place. I wanted to get that upfront and clear it up.
But.
That the, the code speaks differently than your thinking and also how, the way I was thinking about it the first time I ran across this. Is that someone else wanted to do exactly what you're doing. It wasn't a garage. It was, it was simply this. But the way the zoning regulations are written, it requires that you meet the setbacks. The, I, I wish that somebody had and I hope somebody does for the next town meeting. Put a warrant article in there to change that because it, it isn't, it isn't poured concrete. It, it's, it's.
I mean, I could pull six lag bolts and get ten guys and pick it up and walk it out of the, off the property after we put it up.
Yeah.
It's just a, to steal roof is basically what we want. That's all it is, a roof on poles.
I, I totally get it. And I, and that's where I had the, uh.
So I had written things down about kicking it back and, I mean, I'd be willing to kick it back three feet. Because, so there's a telephone pole here. Then there's our fence inside the telephone pole. Fence lines inside the tele, it's in line with the telephone pole. Fence comes and comes back. The pavement matches that. So I would kick it back three feet onto the lawn. That would save me from having to bring in Phil, have it dampened. Uh, pull that, do something with that rock, blast it maybe if I go any shorter.
I think you're going to be above that rock when you finish grade, when you finish floor. You're just going to be, you're going to float right over.
Right, but see, that's all our lawn. And then you're kicking it into the view of our living room and kitchen and. A, and then you got three feet of wasted pavement that nobody uses anymore. It's just going to sit there and have the dirt road, a three or four foot section of pavement, and then two poles for the carport, then some lawn, then the other two poles. I'm not going to put it up like that. So.
Yeah, I, I to, I understand your, your train of thought. I really do. And that's why I, I had the conversation, again, I'll, I'll repeat it. With, with Jamie Simpson about, uh, an application that came before us that was identical to this. And I questioned why, why are we here? Um, and it's because of the way the zoning regulations are written. We as a board cannot change zoning regulations. We can give variances. We can give relief when relief is, and I'm just speaking for myself. I don't know what anybody else in the board is going to do. We, we have not discussed this. But we cannot change the zoning regulation to suit saving a tree or, or a slope. If it was a wetland, yes, we can do that. Um, if it's a true hardship, if there's a cliff that falls off there and it's, yeah, we, if there's a boulder out there the size of a Volkswagen that is ledge, that's something to talk about. But in this case, for me, there, there's, you have a lot of choices. You may not be able to meet the whole forty feet, but you can meet a lot of it. And the other thing is if they have a widen this road, turn it into a town approved road and you're zero setback, that could be in the way. And they would take it by eminent domain. They would knock, I don't know what the hell they would do, but. Um, that could be a problem in itself there. I printed up the, the rest of the neighborhood. I printed up the entire neighborhood. It's here if you want to look at it. It shows every structure on that road. And I don't see any other structure as, with a zero setback on that road unless it's not on this map. And that could be. There's one lot here that has, um, a whole lot of frontage and very little depth. And I can see that they were issued a variance in order to put their home closer to the road than the setback. They had absolutely no choice. And that is a perfect situation why this board is here. For somebody to come in and say, I don't even have forty feet. You know, how can I possibly do it? And we say, yeah, we get, that's, that's understandable. But for me, I can't change the zoning regulations. I can't vote against them. I can't change them. Um, and there's no other wetlands or, or any other reason why you can't pull that onto your lot more.
Except that it would look like, you know what?
It would for you. I.
Yeah, it would be an eyesore.
I get it. I do. And also I, you do. I, I really do.
Well, we're talking hardships, right? So I can't plow snow there anymore. So there's, where am I going to put the snow? Ask the neighbors, can I come up the driveway now and blast it in your yard? Because now I can't because I have a carport in my front lawn. I can't put it on my already cut out, perfectly designed driveway to accept a perfectly the same sized carport, even if I kick it back three more feet.
Three feet? You, you can go way more than three feet.
No, but I won't. So I mean, I'm saying, I would do it for, for the town or, or to satisfy this, I'm willing to say right off, I'll kick it back three feet.
Yeah.
And then you've got roughly, I mean, I don't know how many feet of our driveway is under the road now since it's been widened, but it's a good couple of feet. So, I mean, we never, we don't care because we can't keep the dirt from coming in our driveway. And that's a whole nother topic because of construction in the past. But I, I just don't, my mind says there's absolutely nothing logical about preventing us from furthering our lives and putting up something to keep our vehicles nice, which would increase the value of our property, also probably increase our taxes. And then we can't do it because for what?
Zoning regulations. That's why you can't do it, zoning regulations. But I've said all I need to say, all I want to say.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll just piggyback on what Paul's saying. I, I hope, I hope, I hope it's, I hope it's really clear, right? We don't set, the, the board doesn't set zoning. We as a town of Barrington set the zoning. And as he said earlier, in some towns, this would be considered a temporary structure that wouldn't have anything to do with us. In other towns, it does. That all comes down to the town. And the way to change that is called a warrant. And if someone like yourself filed a warrant and then a town would vote on it. And this might, especially with people like Paul or me saying, and we backed this warrant where we.
I would, I would support that.
We would support the warrant.
Twenty-five signatures from, from people who, who residents. Twenty-five signatures on a warrant hour.
But, but that's not the zoning board today.
I'm going to shut that down. There's a good reason for that. So before I say what I would like to say, I would just like to know, how long has that paved area been there?
Longer than we've been there.
Okay, so this is not like paved recently in anticipation of this?
I would say twenty-five, thirty years.
We've lived there for. Okay.
The pavement existed when.
Pavement was cracking and messed up when we bought it. So that was twenty years ago.
And is the, is the width of that paved area where the two cars are parked exactly the same size of the structure that you're wanting to build? So if you set it back three feet from the road, say that we granted you a variance of three feet, would, would it all be on the paved area or would it be on the paved area and a little bit on the grass? That's what I'm asking.
It would. Can I get up there and point it out?
Yeah, absolutely. Please.
Well, here. Sticking there. So.
Oh, okay.
The driveway curves. It goes down this way and it's. So I didn't want to have the carport sticking out. Let's take, that's about three feet back from where. Take it from the road here. Take that five feet back and. Could be on the edge of the road. So take it.
Okay.
Then you'd have one end of it keep. So to me, it's just you're wasting six feet of pavement or whatever, but.
So the reason I ask is because I noted that the survey that you provided is from two thousand twelve. And I was going to inquire with zoning, with our zoning administrator about whether there were any concerns on his end that we're certain where that line is now and whether this would actually be at the zero setback or if that needed to be clarified.
One conversation that we had with the applicant was, um, to save costs is to present to this board with an existing plan that they had from a foundation cert previously as opposed to an updated version. And if approved and the board saw fit to have that location verified, that may be an option the board would, would, would. Would consider. Um, for something like this where, as you say, it's a temporary structure, you may not require that it be verified or, or you may. So that's, that's kind of how we left it with the applicant. Um, use this, this existing, um, survey and then see what the board says and what they want based on their decision.
Okay. Between the edge of the paved area there and the driving surface of the road, how much space would you say is there, you know, are people driving up onto this paved area when they're passing down your road? Or is there a, a natural gap there?
No, there's no way anybody.
Two cars could actually pass.
You could park two cars in the middle of the dirt road. You wouldn't still be, wouldn't be touching our driveway.
Okay. Uh, did you have anything else you wanted to put forth to the board before we discuss?
I think I pretty much said everything I, that's a good, that picture that was just there, actually, that.
Oh, yeah.
See, now from where it's got some grass showing. Out to the dirt, that used to be all pavement in there. And it busted up over time and then we had a house directly across built and then Danny built. And then he's widened the road a ton. And we've had Phil brought in, I don't know how many dozen times, but it, that's, we've lost several feet of driveway. And. What I was saying is to just, I would be willing to go the three feet the other direction over where the back of my truck is seen. And then the only thing I don't like about that is. Right here, out here, that's just going to be strip of pavement that, that's useless.
Okay.
Where it could be uniform and looking perfectly, it would be cut out. But when I say right on the edge, I'm not going to put the carport out here. I'm going to put it in line with this post. So one post here, one post here, there, one post there, roof here, no sides, open. That post zero foot? Again, is that post at zero feet?
According to the survey, it is.
Yeah, it is zero. Best thing fence line.
The, 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 the electrical pole is shown on the survey.
Post you're talking about is electrical pole? No. Post is not, that's focused. The. Is that at zero feet from the ro, from your property line or is that further in? I think it's about two or three feet in from the road, but the telephone pole is here and the post line is here, right in line with it.
Jamie will point it out. It's on the survey.
This right here indicates that fence that you see in the picture, which is right on the property line. I don't see the telephone pole there, but it's in line with that fence because it seems to be right on the property line.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So. I'm going to now turn to the board deliberations, but I really want to point something out about criteria five. And I think this is going to be important for us to consider. The exact thing that the two of you are bringing up, how the ordinance, the way it's written, requires a variance when you don't feel that this type of temporary structure should require one is exactly why section five exists. An impact that is unintended can be a hardship for purposes of granting a variance. If you believe that the, the way the variance is written encompasses properties or structures that should not be impacted by the ordinance, then that is exactly why that can be a hardship under the way that it's written. So I wanted to put that out there because.
Where did you get that?
The, um, New Hampshire Municipal Association zoning board comprehensive training.
Our manual? The, the manual, the annual manual? Yep. Or this was a class you took?
It will both.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that is, that can absolutely, if you even look at the language, you know, special conditions of the property, property being property and proposed structure, distinguish it from other properties in the area. This structure is maybe not necessarily what was intended to be encompassed in the garage type of ordinance. So I just, I want to put that out there. You know, ultimately, I'm open to hearing your inputs, but I want you to know that that actually can be a hardship under criteria five for granting a variance.
Personally, I think that the ordinance is a hardship personally, the way it's written. But the, the ordinance does not differentiate from a garage to, to a carport.
No, but we can. For, on a case by case basis, this is why we said that we couldn't broadly exempt all temporary structures at the one that we had earlier this year. And we had to take them on a case by case basis. They still need to meet these criteria.
So then, following the logic that I, I believe I just heard, so I want to paraphrase back. Um, so that, but we can, that little bit. So on any ordinance that we feel that the applicant did feel a hardship, we follow the ordinance. We could therefore just essentially, lack for better term, ignore ordinance itself and come up with our own as long as the majority of the board agrees.
You would grant, as long as they met criteria one through four. The impact of the zoning ordinance being not the intended impact or, you know, an inappropriate impact for that property. Yes, that can meet criteria five if one through four are met. That's the purpose of this.
The awesome thing about being a, is it Mr. May or is it Mr. Something else? I saw.
Something else, yeah. That's a, that's an easy way to, it's, it's pronounced, Akulian, yes.
So, um, the awesome thing about being a volunteer in town late at night when you wake up at five AM every morning and had to, um, is you learn stuff.
Yeah.
And that's the, that's the awesome thing.
So.
Uh, uh, okay, so.
If any board members have other questions or points of discussion, I just wanted to put that out there.
The, the forty foot setback, setback, um, is the reason for it in general for, to prevent clutter? Is that the whole idea is an aesthetic issue?
I mean, it's, it's, it's an aesthetic. It's a driving surface issue, but it's also intended most of the time to address construction, which is why we've had these conversations about temporary structures like this before. Um, did our zoning administrator want to weigh in more on the purpose of setback? Relation?
Sure. There, there's many. And I think what the chair specifically is addressing is, you know, the definition of structure and how that can be all encompassing, um, other than the few exceptions that might be in our zoning, which, you know, driveway fences, um, things of that nature that aren't considered structures. A generator we've exempted out because, you know, where do you place a generator? And you run into constant, um, you know, if you lump them into those structure things, you, you impose hardships on lots unintentionally. So I think that's what the chair is, is implying that the open sided carports that are, can be deemed temporary and be replaced, you know, in perpetuity, but, um, the nature of them maybe wasn't meant to be included in a structure under our setbacks in zoning. And so that's why, um, I think she's right in saying the little enforcement of the precision, um, the provision of the ordinance could create a hardship. Um, setbacks that we redo them for all sorts of reasons. If this was one twenty-five and this was a state right of way and they want to widen it in telephone poles, you certainly don't want anything in the setbacks where this is a dead end private road. Uh, a little bit different situation. Um, and we don't spot zone in the sense of say, okay, well, dead end private roads, you're going to have no setbacks and major roads, you're going to have fifty foot setbacks usually. We, we don't spot zone, but we, you know, so we can't pick and choose in that regard. Um, we do have different setbacks for different regions that we've outlined as highway commercial and those. and those will have different setbacks for different uses. But it's hard to have one zoning for everything, every situation, and that's why the ZVA exists. So, you know, maybe a dead-end narrow road, it's appropriate, as opposed to a paved class-five road.
Personal driveways that are paved, is that also something that, is that having anything to do with you guys?
Uh, no, um, driveways, uh, on class-five roads, we regulate driveway entrances. Private roads, we do not regulate driveways at all, um, other than, um, in new homes. It would, the only thing that we contemplate is percent grade, so, uh, fire apparatus can get in there and protect people. Um, but because we don't maintain the roads, we don't have the authority to issue driveway permits on those roads.
So that said, I think I should make another comment. I could support this if, if we were to be guaranteed, if I was gonna be guaranteed that this would never be, have sides, never have walls. It has walls, now it's a garage. And if, if you came in here with a garage application, we couldn't even be discussing this zoning regulation having different possible meanings for us.
We can't, they can't delay it from back, right? Can't say, like, I would support this if you had neighbors coming in, if you had written things from your neighbors saying-
They get noticed, they have a choice, they can come and speak.
Some people walk around with neighbors and not commit with it. It'd be a lot easier, um, where there are something saying, "Yeah, I'm, I'm your, I'm your butter, and I'm, I'm for this." That's your cooling, and vehicles are there anyway, and I'd rather them not be hit by, by hail. Or, "I hate this, and I'm not writing a letter," you know, or "I hate this, and give it to you." Um, but they're not, they're not coming in here complaining. So for me personally, it's just, okay, I'm a hundred percent with all of it, this has got sides, you know? Um, I don't know if you know, but we're not allowed to talk about this.
Yep.
Um, which I think is really critical, you do know. So, when I read this and I talked to my wife, and I said, "This got sides." And she's like, "Why? We would love that." And I'm like, "They store crap in it, and now it's an eyesore." It's all about afterwards, that, that, we're, we're, we're looking at this not only for today, but for a year from now. Yeah, that's why the law, that's why the ordinance is written this way. If you're silly enough that we volunteer our time to try to figure out what to do.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And I think it's perfectly appropriate to put in your decision, if you go that way, that this is a variance for an open-sided structure, that's-
So I was gonna say that, we can, we can impose, you know, restrictions or limitations in granting. So what, I'm gonna turn back to you and sort of give you two options. Um, we can proceed with inviting a motion of the board and voting on this tonight. Uh, but given what Mr. Fairfield has said, I don't know what discussions have occurred with you and your neighbors. Um, so, the other option is to table it for, uh, only at your request, we can only do this at your request, table it for a month until next meeting, if you wanted to bring people in. Um, that is entirely up to you, that's just one comment of one board member. Uh, but if we do proceed with a vote tonight, and the vote does not go in your favor, that is the end of that process. Uh, I would invite an informal polling of the board, if you would like to know kinda which way we're leaning.
Um, well, I didn't ask her yet, but I would rather you guys vote on it tonight than- What you're suggesting is I would ask my neighbors ahead of time, and then get them to write something, is that what you want me to do?
I wouldn't say suggest, I said that it would have been easier for me.
Oh.
I would recommend that her last comment was to give a poll. Let's see where we're leaning out before we- But, I was not saying that, that you needed to do that, I said, "Had you done that, it would be-"
Yeah, I thought about actually doing, going to the neighbors, which, to me, there would have been three. One of them just moved, so they don't even know the new one yet. But I would have gone to the two that I, actually, the insulins, I would have gone to three. And I'm sure they all would have said, "Do we want?"
Have you talked to them at all about this?
No, no, but we get along with them.
And the, and, and notices did go out?
And I thought about the, who could possibly, you know, why wouldn't they like it? For one thing, the one on this side of me, that way, he can't even see it. I mean, he's below it, he wouldn't even be able to see it unless he was, I, he couldn't even see it. The one across could see it, the one over here can't see it. I mean, I don't see that-
Are you concerned that if, if, if you didn't have a sidewall, and, and I think you already said you're not gonna have sidewall?
No, no.
All right, I, I'm thinking about a snowplow going by there.
First of all, we, the road association has just recently, in the last two years, started, we kick in, we pay too. They've got someone to plow, it was Danny for a while, but now they've hired someone else. And they don't take care of that. That, our house, the house across from me, I take care of all that. I bank it, I push it back, I push our snow over there on their yard, I take care of their driveway. So I would be concerned with, like, a town plow winging it by, going by there at forty. But they don't come up our road, the town doesn't go up there, and I'm the one who plows that area. The guy who we pay, he'll swipe down and come back and leave all kinds of rows, I clean it up. Other guys with four-wheelers clean it up. I got two plow trucks and a four-wheeler, and two snow blowers.
So you're leaning towards an, an informal, uh-
What I just wanted to reiterate is if we proceed to a vote tonight, and, and the vote is not in your favor, that is the end of this process. So, that's why I'm giving you the opportunity to talk to your neighbors, if you want to do that. But I would just tell the board that I am currently willing to make a motion in favor of this, based on the fact that-
If we say that there's no sides-
And with the requirement that it remains sideless.
Then I'm okay with it. There's no sides, and if our back from the street is possible, the presentation, and the fact that that car's got high-quality car cover, so it's been there for a while, I'm okay with it. I'm in love with it, but I'm okay with it.
I'd be okay with it if, as long, I guess we're doing the informal. I'd be okay with it-
Part of the discussion.
With, um, with the condition that there, there are no sides. And I would go further and say, if sides ever show up, you agree tonight that it comes down, whole thing comes down, if you close it up.
Well, if you, if the requirement, if, if this is granted with a requirement of no sides, the moment you put sides on it, you are in violation of the zoning ordinance. And, you know, code enforcement will enforce as they are allowed to do, so. Um, but it sounds like we have at least three people willing to support this tonight, so, uh, would you like us to proceed to a vote?
Yeah.
Okay.
Please.
Uh, then at this time, I would make a motion that we grant the variance request in case number two-two-four-six-seven-gr-two-five for a variance, um, for a setback of zero feet, where forty feet is required with the requirement that this structure never have walls, for the following reasons. Granting this variance is not contrary to the public interest, this is a private road, there are already cars parked there, and we have discussed extensively, um, the impact that may come on the property owner with further development that may be here, but it's certainly not in the public interest to not allow people to protect their vehicles in the winter, and there's already a paved area that has been there for a long time. Uh, granting the variance would not be, would be consistent with the spirit of the ordinance, because as discussed by this board, we do not believe that this type of structure was the intended reason for this zoning ordinance. Um, granting the variance would do substantial justice, because it would allow these people to protect their vehicles in the winter, and make maximum utilization of their property as they see fit. Granting the variance will not result in diminution of the surrounding property values, this is not an eyesore structure. Nothing that's been presented tonight would indicate that this would cause any detriment to the neighbors as far as property values go. And finally, literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship, because the following special condition of, of the property distinguishes it from others. This is not the type of structure that this board believes was intended to be limited by this ordinance. Uh, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application. Again, uh, we do not consider this, in theory, temporary bolt-down structure with no sides to be a structure within the definition of the, um, ordinance for this property and this situation. And finally, the proposed use is a reasonable one, because, you know, these are antique cars, and you would like to protect them. We understand that people should be allowed to use their property, um, within the confines of the law, we believe that that's what this is. So, um, do I have a second?
Grab a second.
Okay, Mr. Graff, and a roll call vote, please.
Fairfield, aye.
Graff, aye.
Landenkin, aye.
Tidbito, aye.
Samaco, aye. So your variance is granted, you'll receive a notice of decision from, uh, Mr., from the land use office shortly after this, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Please, I would just see a warrant.
I, I actually do think it can apply though, because I do think that the notification to the neighbors that you are putting up the temporary structure is important, and they should have feedback. So, in my opinion, I don't think a structure of that size, you should just be able to put up without any notification, so I'm a little disappointed.
Actually, though, you're right, but, but the neighbors were not-
Correct, but if we are taking it out of this, and saying-
We're not changing the law.
No, but if the warrant does, I'm saying, if the warrant, if the warrant were to vote on it
Yeah.
and pass, then, then I can take, uh, right on my neighbor's corner, I can throw my structure there, and she can't say anything about it, so.
Then it becomes more developed, it becomes more-
Yeah, but that is beyond the, you know, we address this on a case-by-case basis.
I, I agree with you on that part. I don't like zero setback.
I understand.
Period.
Um-
Especially on the, on our old frontage.
And, I, I understand, but we take it, we take them as they come, and we address them one by one. And I have a baked potato at home I would really like to get to. So, um, next I would like to review the minutes from the last meeting, which, um, the only members present were Fairfield, Tlaniken, and myself, so, uh, would just be, thank you, chief. Uh, would just be betw- uh, voted on by those parties. Does anybody have a amendment or question about the minutes? And I would entertain a motion.
Let me hear it, so I have to-
Yeah, I propose, oh, go ahead.
No, no, it's all right.
I move that we set them in, uh, um, minutes as written.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Samaco, aye.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Well, that's, that's-
You got your business?
I did to-
I thought you had a potato.
I do have a potato, but I wanted to give the opportunity for any additional business that needed to be raised this evening by anyone from the land use office.
I have one.
Okay.
None of you?
You have no trials?
And any, any other business from the board?
I have a question. Jamie, uh, she did put a size on the, who can this sign?
Uh, I, in five years from now, when I read this notice, notice of decision, I will have to make that, uh, determination then, but I would say-
That's a good question.
Yeah, I would say, they could say size of any time, of, of any kind.
I, I just, it, it-
I read those before they go out, so don't worry, I got you.
In writing contracts, I think someone else on the board here-
Madam Chair, may I make the motion to adjourn?
Do I have a second?
Second, Graff.
What the hell, I just got shut off.
Talking about that off.
No, I'll say, I, I-
Fairfield, aye.
Let's go eat a potato.
I just need you to shut now. You just hear what you're saying.